Okay, we're ready when you are.
Thank you. I call this meeting of the Lancaster County Planning Commission to order. Six oh two by that clock, six o'clock by mine. And before I go any further, I'd like to welcome all of you. Thank you for being here. I'll ask the clerk, if she will, to call a roll, please.
Jason Cavalier.
Here.
Shelley Richards.
Here.
Yukiya Kuratin? Absent. Shelley Henson?
I'm here.
Judy Anna Tinklingberg? Absent. Alan Patterson?
Here.
Okay.
I'm here, too.
And Chairman Dietz?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
I'll ask the clerk, if she will, to make a record that a quorum of the Planning Commission is present in the public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda has been posted to required length of time in the lobby of the County Administration Building and on the county website. And the news media was informed of the time and place of the meeting. Once again, I'll say thank you for being here. We have one guest that it is really nice seeing. And that's our county attorney, Ms. Jenny Merk Dupont. Thank you for being here. If you will, at this time, I'll ask everyone to stand. And along with Mr. Patterson as he gives the pledge of allegiance and the short prayer, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Loving God, we thank you for the beautiful weather that we experienced today, the changing of the seasons. It reminds us that you're still in control of everything, Lord. Please give us wisdom and discernment as we, as we make decisions and we make proposals and recommendations to our county leaders on behalf of the fine folks of Lancaster County. Where lead God and direct our paths so that we can grow closer to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Now comes time for citizens' comments. And no one has signed to speak at this time. So we will forego that and move on. Pardon me? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Please stand. That will come up later. Yes. Next item is the approval of the minutes. The Planning Commission meeting, nine seventeen, twenty twenty four, the regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. As written, all in paper? Unanimous, thank you. Next is the Planning Commission meeting workshops for the workshop minutes. I'll get it straight in a minute. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item is item five A, subdivision twenty twenty two, twenty one, twenty two, River Chase Two. Ms. Harden?
Yes, sir. This is an application by River Chase Estates Partners LLC and LGI Homes to subdivide a piece of one of the three tracks on River Chase. The proposal is Phase Two of River Chase. Phase one was recorded in two thousand eight and Phase Three was granted preliminary approval in two thousand twenty three. Development, the entire development is zoned LDR, which is Low Density Residential, with a development agreement that expires in March two thousand twenty six. Under that development agreement, the development is regulated under the two thousand eight UDO. And that is the zone and the controls we apply to that in addition to any variances that are adopted in the development agreement. It was previously denied due to connectivity issues. The proposed plat that you see before you today has three hundred forty one lots on the site plan. It has internal circulation. It is bound by the Catawba River and railroad tracks. There's no direct access to Riverside Drive. Riverside Drive is the main road close to and access point for River Chase. But this one does not technically have a direct connection to Riverside Drive. It has a, it has a connection to the entry road, which is the private entry road for Rivers, River Chase. But the other two sections have direct connection to Riverside. Now, we do not require that they both have direct connection to Riverside itself. It would be impractical in this location because of the railroad track in the area that prevents the connection. But we did require through the fire marshal that they have a secondary entrance. That was part of the reason that we have seen it before and it did not pass. In addition, the road names that are shown on the plat were approved in June two thousand twenty four. For the photos, we have a couple of photos of where we posted the property to notify the neighborhood of the subdivision action. And we have aerial information. Phase three on the map on the right-hand side is the complete boundary of the property. Phase three is on the left and Phase Two, the one we're reviewing today, is on the right. The yellow squiggly lines in the middle, that's Phase One. Those are the roads that show where development has already occurred. Under our staff review, we've been through a lot with this development. We've reviewed it several times. They've, the applicants have come back and made amendments. The biggest being that they have provided a secondary access point as required by the fire code and the fire marshal has reviewed it and approved it. Other TRC comments have been addressed as well. This was the last big thing that we were waiting on and that has been achieved. And you can see that at the entry point, the boundary line. This one is not the one that has the, the slate. But the, the entry road would have a stub off from the entry point coming down to the first road off into Phase Two. Can you put the click, put the, the arrow back on the slides, please? Thank you. So staff does have a recommendation with the following conditions to be met within sixty days of planning commission approval. We've determined that there are twelve lots that don't meet the minimum width of the setback lines. We would like to ask those be amended in order to do that. Otherwise, we can't recommend approval at all. Provide copies of the DHEC reports regarding the septic tank suitability and amend the storm exhibit to match the site plan. The storm exhibit has three hundred forty three lots and the site plan is three hundred forty one. And those are our recommendations.
Any questions for Ms. Harden? Mr. Patterson?
Ms. Harden. When I look at it and I couldn't, on the larger plan that I, that we had access to, I know this is phased, this is a phased development.
Yes, sir.
What connectivity is there? Because it looks like it's really three single. Is there pedestrian connectivity, trail connectivity? I couldn't make it out on the, the plan that I have. And so that's, I mean, we talk about connectivity a lot in planning and in, in Planning Commission. Just want to make sure that we're, these are not isolated neighborhoods, that they're connected because it is one neighborhood.
There is a road that connects from the entry point to the main phase that's, that's already been constructed and connects to this phase. Secondary road in Phase Three. But as far as connectivity, as, as we currently talk about it, the UDO that this was passed under in two thousand eight did not encourage that as much as our current one does. So we are not able to hold them to more than what we have been able to hold them to. We've asked them for additional connectivity or a different connectivity in the, kind of in the middle of the development that would connect over to Phase One, but the lots in Phase One had already been sold and the applicant was not able to purchase those in order to create an open space. In addition, the, the development agreement for whatever the road conditions are in the UDO at two thousand eight, the development agreement specifically states that the, the road, roads shall not be subject to requirements set forth in the UDO but must comply with the following minimum standards and then gives the minimum standards for that. So we were not able to make connectivity as much as we would like through this.
I understand. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Harden. We will now consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. As I call your name, please come forward. And if necessary, adjust the mic. State your name and address for the record. Please speak clearly. You will have up to three minutes to make your statements to the Planning Commission, to the Planning Commission only and not to any one individual. David Bossery.
Nice to see you folks again. I'm David, David Bossery. I'm at four oh nine nine Persimmon Road. I was one of the early homeowners in River Chase. Primarily wanted to talk about the way the Section Two plan and plats as proposed affects the existing trail system and you talked about connectivity. I've had correspondence with representatives from RJ Harris and from LGI over the, since our, since the April meeting. What's interesting and rather shocking is there is in fact no diagram available from either RJ Harris or LGI that lays out the three sections in relation to each other and in relation to the existing nature preserve and, nature preserve and trail. So I've recently, you've got a, was this handed out to them? Okay, so you have three sheets of paper there. These are actually snips from the utility drawing out of the plat diagram. And I chose that because it shows existing, it shows topographical features and existing roads of Section One. The first sheet actually represents my lot, something close to it. And I walked from the back of our lot line, four hundred feet. The end of four hundred feet ends up actually in a lot in the new section. And in between is a wetland. So the existing trail is actually in that gray, what's that, what, what we have now as a trail is actually in that gray area. If you look at the second diagram, it's a lot at the corner of Chimney Bluff and Persimmon. And again, I drew in the lot and there is only two hundred feet between the back of that lot and the next, and the lots in Section One. And the trail would actually be somewhere inside these lots. So the existing trail would essentially be gone. Again, there's no way to confirm that because there's no diagram that lays these things out with each other. And the third one shows down in a curve of Chimney Bluff and there's only seventy five feet between what's now Section One and what would be Section Two. And the trail is somewhere in the middle of these roads. So until they address how this is going to work, we were all sold a five hundred acre nature preserve trails. It looks to me like they're gone, but I can't actually tell because there is no diagram that lays these things out together. So I would hope that the Planning Commission would require that they address this and lay it out. I'm in full support of Section Two being built and I'm in full support of the Planning Commission approving the construction permits for Section Three. But we can't tell what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dawn Foster.
Dawn Foster, sixty three sixty seven Chimney Bluff Road. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today concerning the proposed development plans from LGI of Section Two. I stand before you not only as a concerned citizen, but as a voice for many of our community. Please raise your hand if you're from River Chase. Who are, who are deeply troubled by the lack of transparency and communication from LGI. First and foremost, I would like to highlight a crucial aspect of our development, the community trail system. The trail is not just a path. It represents a vital component of our community's identity and connectivity. Many of us bought in River Chase because of the trail system. Our community petition presented, petition presented to you back in April, which garnished a whole lot of support, explicitly requested that the trail system be incorporated in the plat. However, it appears that LGI or the county has chosen to disregard this request completely. Without this trail system being formally included in the plat, there is a real risk that LGI can remove or alter these trails without notifying the community, leaving us with nothing but empty promises. This would fundamentally, fundamentally change the landscape of our neighborhood and undermine the enjoyment and accessibility that we currently cherish. Additionally, I must address the pressing issue of communication. I hope LGI is actually out there and they're listening. Many of us have experienced firsthand the frustration of trying to reach out to LGI and their new homeowner association called CAMHS. Since the change, communication has become even more challenging with all correspondence only allowed through an online portal system. For those of us who have submitted questions and concerns, we wait weeks for a response. This is very disheartening. In some cases, our messages have gone entirely unanswered. This lack of responsiveness indicates a disturbing disconnect between LGI and our community. I urge each of you to consider the implication of allowing this plat to move forward without the trail system and under the current communication circumstances. We must not let the wishes for LGI overshadow the principle of community engagement and transparency. The voice of River Chase matters. And while we do not have a seat at the table yet, at the very least, we deserve the amenities that all of us were promised when we purchased our lots in River Chase. As a committee tasked with safeguarding our community's interest, I implore you to demand answers and accountability from LGI. The sad reality is that speaking publicly at these meetings is our only chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Jennifer Sabatino.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Jennifer Sabatino, sixty seventy Chimney Bluff Road, River Chase Estates. Elaine Bullman, a resident of River Chase Estates, and I submitted a petition at the last planning meeting with about a hundred eighty resident signatures, urging county planning to have LGI primarily add our trails to the plats for Section One, Three, and most importantly, Section Two, where the topography was in question. We stressed that our trails needed to be accessible, safe, and connected. In addition, we asked for county governance and quality assurance. At this point, we have not received any assurance of running, let alone quality, from LGI. As per Section three point oh three of our contract and summation, the county may apply laws adopted after the execution of our agreement through a public hearing and determines that laws are essential to public health, safety, and general welfare of our community. Based on the last statement, here are a few questions I am hoping can be addressed. Looking at the proposed Section Two, it looks like our petition was not considered. Why were the trails not plotted? Would that not fall under the safety and welfare of a community? Not to the grandfather two thousand eight UDOs. After the last tropical storm hurricane, a majority of our trails in Section One off Chimney Bluff Road, a hundred feet in, were underwater until the landing near the river. It was surprising to see how much water pushed inland, even at higher topography. Out of concern, this is nothing compared to the devastation Elaine has caused in many areas, one being Western Carolina. Our continued prayers for those affected. The devastation hopefully taught us all that we continue to hope, pray for the best, but we must better prepare for the worst. Worst through proactive thinking. It all starts with planning. To my knowledge, the current UDOs as of two thousand sixteen include sidewalks and private developments. Our roads are barely safe to walk on with all through traffic and construction vehicles. As a reminder, there is no turn limit to building in River Chase Estates. Can sidewalks be enforced and added to Section Two and Three, not officially approved at this time, including construction permits? In addition, there is now more oversight and expressions by county of private roads with the current UDOs. Unfortunately, we, we did not have this with Section One of River Chase Estates and are paying the price now. Through countless emails from many residents over many years to our management companies, we are still with potholes right at our front gate and sinking roads. There has been no action or much communication concerning our roads at all. Can our roads in Section Two and Three follow the new two thousand sixteen, soon to be two thousand twenty five UDOs for better quality assurance and accountability under Section three point oh three of our contract mentioned above for the overall welfare of our community? Lastly, through previous meetings, I and other residents have made it clear that LGI has not made any efforts to open communication with our community. This is so important to establish trust and show they care for the betterment of our community, short and long term. Our new management company, CAMHS, in short, has been silent. There is not only no, no more onsite presence, we are struggling getting our questions answered by email. Most importantly, the Van Wick Fire Chief still has not received any board contacts or local contacts in case of a fire or fire alarm. This is important to close out any emergency response and safety for any community. I, on behalf of many residents of River Chase Estates, I urge you, county planning and county, and county to mandate quarterly meetings with both our, our, River Chase Estates Board members and current management company through a public hearing, using language under contract three point three. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sabatino. Daniel Gates.
Hello, I'm Daniel Gates, representing RJ Harris, the engineer for River Chase Estates. I just want to open, open up for questions and address that I've got the, the, the answers and the resolutions to all of Allison's comments that she provided us to, to us about a week and a half ago and just look forward to resubmitting the plans.
Please pull your mic around. At this time, we don't have any comments. We will call you back if there's any questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim Hughes.
Thank you. Jim Hughes, fifty twenty eight Townsend Road in River Chase. And I want to make a comment. I don't think it's a, specifically a Planning Commission issue. In the plan that's presented, there is land separated for a fire station and that seems to be all understood. And, but it's very vague beyond the Planning Commission, how that's going to proceed forward. There seems to be funds available, but as each day goes by, those funds become diminished just by inflation. So if there's any opportunity for the Planning Commission to urge council or any other parties to release the funds and begin this process, that would be a wonderful thing to do since the agreement expires within a couple of years and we're not at the two hundred and fifty occupancy certificates to release the funds. So whatever the delay is, each day as more people move into this development, I think there's exposure to risk and to the well-being of, of the, the people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's all that has signed to speak to this. So we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. And the applicant is represented here, I think. The, do you have any comments at this time or any rebuttal to the comments that you've heard? Thank you. All right, Ms. Harden?
I wanted to comment on a couple of things. The trail system on the map, there is a mention of a ten-foot easement to be added. While the development agreement doesn't give us the, the right to require that before it goes forward, the Planning Commission, however, can require that to be put on the, the plat in the next sixty days. The comment about the fire station. I do know that our county administrator has been trying to get in touch with the applicant regarding that and is waiting on a callback. The fire station funds, contrary to what one of the, the residents said, the fire station funds have been going up each year because it has not been paid. In the development agreement is a unique, a unique fund or fee generation. The fee is generated per household and goes up every year either by the annual percentage change in the Consumer Price Index or three percent, whichever is greater. That also applies to the funds for the fire station. Those funds for the fire station haven't been paid yet. So the funds are actually, the, the fee is actually increasing every year that it is not paid. That is not typical in our development agreements, but this is, that's one of the unique things about the development agreement. I believe that's all the clarification. Oh, and I know Ms. Sabatino has asked about us being able to apply the two thousand sixteen regulations. We are not able to do that because of the agreement that the developer has with the county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you River Chase Two. You've heard from staff, you've heard from the citizens. You've heard from a number of people over a period of several, several weeks. So it has reached a point now that we make a decision. And it's solely the decision of this Planning Commission. So I will ask at this time, do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve conditionally that the applicant also meet the staff suggested conditions that are listed in our packet within the next sixty days. In addition to adding the trails to the plat within the next sixty days.
Second time motion? That's it? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion for Mr. Patterson to approve with the conditions that are set forth by staff in the package and to add the trails to the plan within the next sixty days. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Have a second. Have a second. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions stated. Do we have a roll call vote, please? Any discussion, excuse me.
I have one question.
Ms. Richardson.
Allison, just because I'm new to the commission, what is the roadway requirements per the 2008 agreement?
I've turned Exhibit B and read it right from you or for you. Developers allowed flexibility in road design because interior roads shall be owned and maintained by the HOA. Roads shall not be subject to the requirements set forth in the UDO, but must comply with the following minimum standards. For the road right of way for collector roads, 66 feet; for local roads, 60 feet; for pavement width, it's 24 feet with 12-inch or 12-foot lanes; for local roads, it's 22 feet with 11-foot lanes. There is also a specific on the centerline curve radius, 250 feet for collector roads, 150 feet for local roads. Both of those are minimums. The tangent between the reverse codes and the tangent in intersections, there are none required for either of those. In addition, there are five subcategories under that. It says the ditch sections shall be permissible for all roadways and ditches shall be lined, rip, rap, paved, geotextile fabrics, et cetera, as necessary to stabilize. That curb and gutter when used shall be either 24-inch valley gutter or 24-inch standard curb. Median curb type shall be approved by DOT. As security for roads, the developer may provide a bond or letter of credit equal to not less than 100% of construction cost. Sidewalks are not required, and as used in this agreement, collector roads shall mean and refer only to those roads that have the ability to move traffic from one section of the property to the other. So the roads that reach the property boundaries between the two sections or the three sections would be considered the collector roads.
Didn't have a pavement section?
No, it did not. At that point, I believe that it falls back to the UDO. Or maybe, well, actually, no. It would say roads shall not subject to the requirements set forth in the UDO.
Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Harden, was there an amenities plan in the original submittal or anything that would pertain to an amenities type?
There was discussion of a trail system. As the applicant, as the residents have discussed, there was also public benefit in the fire station land to be given to the county and a rooftop fee per house that was built. Go back to that. I beg your pardon while I flip back and forth. Transfer development rights payment. The infrastructure and services section included the roads, the maintenance and costs for the private roads and for the maintenance of any landscaping and right of way within the medians of the property that may be then transferred to the homeowners association. Restricted access community was allowed in the development agreement. The landscaping at the entrance for that. Amendments per each. And that is all that I have here.
So I believe you said if you would repeat it for me, because it's hard to hear sometimes, but I believe you said that the planning commission can require the trail systems to be put into the plat within 60 days?
Yes, the statement on the top of the plat is that they would be provided, but you can require them to be put on the plat before they are allowed to go forward.
Okay. And then a last thing, as far as the road improvements, because I have driven by there several times, it's in my district, and I take concern that someone stated there was no turn lanes or anything for ingress or egress into the neighborhood. On an extended request of information here, is that part of the bond package that's possibly coming up in November?
There is a, there was a traffic impact analysis done for this project that had several off-site improvements that would need to be done at certain times through the development. The development, as you probably guessed, is not very far along compared to the number of lots that are potential. There has been a lot of discussion going on about some of the off-site improvements, including a roundabout proposed. So I don't have my notes with me on exactly on that, but I can get that back to you as part of the discussion if you'd like.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to approve meeting the conditions of staff, which are just the width of the 12 lots that do not meet the minimum width at the setback line, specifically lots 12, 17, 24, 80, 81, 114, 204, 274, 275, 6, 292, and 293. And that was 276, not just six. Second item was to provide copies of a DEAG report for the septic tank suitability. The third item, amend the storm exhibit to match the site plan. And the last item was to add the trails to the plan itself. That all within the next 60 days. Is everyone satisfied at this point? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Jason Cavalier?
Four.
Shelley Richards?
Four.
Sheila Henson?
Are.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or. The motion passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, commissioners. The next item is text amendment 2024, 2122, archery shooting range. And we'll give these folks just a minute, Ms. Eldon. Thank you, folks, for being here.
Can we have a three-minute?
Pardon me?
Can we have a three-minute recess real quick?
Sure.
Thank you.
We will be recessed for five minutes. She can't make it back in three hours.
Thank you for that break. For this item, the text amendment for archery shooting range. An application by the Lancaster County Parks and Rec Department to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow shooting range, archery, indoor and outdoor, for archery and airsoft ranges in the INS district. Amy, would you mind, please? The INS districts are institutional. Those are districts that cover the schools and the county parks and county recreation centers, county buildings, also churches. The background for this is that the Recreation Department has been named as a recipient of a grant to create an archery program for the county, which is wonderful. We look for that. This proposal includes shooting ranges for archery and airsoft to address a gap in recreation opportunities for teenagers. We have several programs in the rec centers that hit the sweet spot for the young children. We have playground activities. You have activities that are very open to the younger children. But as we get into teenage systems, a lot of recreation centers across the country are finding it harder to find things that are interesting to the teenage population. This is one of those that has been mentioned as a potential and as getting a grant. They're hoping to start a program for that. The grant that they received is from the USA Archery Organization. USA Archery has a comprehensive training program that has different levels of training. The instructors that are trained under USA Archery are trained to their standards, even so that we aren't able to see the field schedules for their proposed outlines for archery competitions and fields because they are part of the proprietary knowledge that comes along with being a guidance person. So when we contacted USA Archery, they recommended the Easton Companies Guidance as a similar guide for you to look at when I was asking for what we should put into the code. The current code for shooting ranges addresses shooting ranges of different types, both indoor and outdoor. There are current rules about applicability, noise mitigation, containment design, lead recovery for those that have bullets, and rage supervision for the indoor. And then the outdoor has separation requirements, noise mitigation, in addition to hours of operation, design under the NRA Range Source Book, and security. Those regulations are fine for shooting ranges for firearms, but for archery, it's not as applicable for archery. Archery is an allowed use under the code, but the INS does not currently allow shooting ranges. So shooting ranges aren't allowed in the areas where our recreation centers will be allowed. So in order to amend it, we asked Boy Scout leaders, we talked to USA Archery representatives and the Parks and Rec staff, what kind of regulations would you need to install in order to have an archery program or an airsoft program? They answered with the information that we have here. The gentleman from USA Archery was very nice and gave me some basic guidelines, but recommended this handout that I presented to you at the desk and given a copy to Ms. Schuler for the file that would lay out the specifics in the design, from entry-level youth to small ranges, all the way up to big, large venues, which we don't envision at this time. All activities would be under the supervision of certified, adult-trained instructors, and all participants would have appropriate safety gear, and research shows that the teen population is underserved. The proposed changes are to allow archery and airsoft ranges in the INS and to refer to established guidance documents for range design. I learned my lesson in the last month about putting regulations in based on guidance here or there, and instead, in this section, I have recommended that we refer to existing guidance and let that guidance be the standard, in particular because we are getting a grant from USA Archery that we apply their standards as our base for how you would set up an archery range. Either that one or the Boy Scout Handbook. Both of them are referred to in the proposed changes. Because Boy Scout troops often are aligned with churches and have activities at churches, I know personally, from my personal experience, my husband is an Eagle Scout and led our scout troops from when my son was a cub, all the way up to when my son got his Eagle. And we did summer camps with archery, and the setup for the archery was hard, and we had to lay things out and measure it and make sure we followed the guidelines. But there are guidance standards in the Boy Scout Manual, National Shooting Sports Manual, that cover archery, BB guns, airsoft, and the other things that the Boy Scouts get merit badges for. So in this, we recommend the shooting range indoor be added to the INS, that activities on properties owned INS will be limited to archery, airsoft, and BB guns. So in the first section, we limit it to the activities that we're asking for now, and we do not open up churches to shooting ranges at this time for firearms. The design, for the design of the facility, that will be required to be the appropriate standard bearers for the use for shooting ranges, the National Rifle Association, we maintain that. For the archery ranges, it may follow the most recent additions of either USA Archery standards or those found in the Boy Scout National Shooting Sports Manual. Both of the, the Boy Scouts National Shooting Manual is available for free online and would be a resource to anyone that wanted to set one up that didn't have the USA Archery program or proprietary knowledge. For airsoft and BB guns, the design standards in the Boy Scout National Shooting Manual will prevail. That way, we don't have to put in how many feet they have based on what they're looking at. There will be that guidance in those manuals. For the outdoor, we also, again, put that archery's on property zone to INS will be limited to archery, airsoft, and BB gun. The specification requirements for firearms is separated out into a subsection, then archery is separated into another subsection. That outdoor archery, airsoft, and BB gun uses will not be allowed any closer than 100-foot to any residential use regardless of the zoning. That way, if there is a house there, no matter what it's zoned, because oftentimes we buffer from residential zones that we wanted to buffer from the use. The noise mitigation is left as is. The shot containment says all ranges shall be designed to contain the bullet shots, arrows, or other projectiles on the range facility. And then the design of the facility would be referenced, same as in the indoor shooting, to the USA Archery and Boy Scout Manual. The site plan for archery, airsoft, and BB guns, we additionally say that the site plan must be submitted, attesting that the proposed range complies with the applicable safety and design standards for outdoor range provisions in the USA Archer and/or Boy Scout National Shooting Sports Manual. That the detailed site plan must show the boundary of the subject's property in its entirety and depict all discernible existing uses and structures within 300 feet of the subject property's boundary. That way, we know if there is a residence within that 300 foot, or within 300 feet of that. In addition, oftentimes, we will get a portion of a property outline in the site plan. We really need to see the whole thing to make sure that the distance is appropriate. And then surface danger zones and buffers must be located entirely on the subject property, and ranges must be designed to contain all projectiles and debris caused by the type of ammunition targets and activities to be used to occur on the property. The layout of the proposed range with the accompanying. Safety mechanisms must be delineated on the required site plan, and all firing stations, all target stations, excuse me, must be set the standard distance proposed by the appropriate guidebook. Last one, for security, we again set out the NRA regulations separate. And then for archery, airsoft, and BB guns, that the shooting range must be enclosed per the guidance to discourage the public from entering the shooting area. Signage reflecting the rules and considerations for shooters shall be employed per the guidance documents referenced above. Because both guidance documents, the BSA, and if they go by the Eastern, is that there are documents that say you have to have a sign, and this is what it must say. And it must say something about your safety equipment, about staying away from the shooting area, paying attention. There's even a schedule of whistles and signals that are employed during archery so that the archers could hear, and they're supposed to know those signals before they are participating in that tournament, so they can remain safe. So those are our proposed changes. The benefits of this program, physical skills can improve hand-eye coordination, mental skills can focus and concentration. It's a social event. You have self-defense skills and confidence, and it's relatively inexpensive, so it is a good fit for the families in Lancaster County if well-managed, which we believe it will be under our Recreation Division. And a sample of standards, the Boy Scouts of America BSA has field standards in their book. They, the Details and Quiver of Bow Rack is the one that I pulled out on the screen for you. And then the Archery Planning Guide for an Indoor Range under the Easton Guidelines is pulled out on the right-hand side. But I decided to go ahead and print the entire handbook to show you because there's just so much detail in that. I wanted you to understand why I didn't take all of that out and put it in the code. And let's just reference it. And then in addition, if there are changes due to safety issues or security issues, or if there is a change in technology that requires the distances to be increased or decreased, then those handbooks will be updated accordingly, whereas our zoning code might not pick up on that because we're not in the field on a regular basis.
Questions for Ms. Harden?
It's a great idea.
It's Cavalier. Excuse me. Mr. Cavalier?
I agree with Ms. Henson. It is a great idea. I do have a concern, though, that as you saw in the last part here of the archery, airsoft, BB guns, that there is a distinct difference between a recurve compound bow and a crossbow. There's a significant difference in the power. Is that something that we're trying to take into account here as well? Or is it just going to be blanketed as archery?
The base understanding that I have from going through the documentation from Easton and from other agencies is that there are different field sizes for the different bow types. So that if you have a compound bow, you're not going to be shooting the same way as a person with an entry-level, just, the Boy Scout bow is different than the ones we got.
Yeah. Refer to the document.
Yeah. The power, the, and I'm going on memory right now, which is slim, but they have different competitions based on your different bow strength, as well as the different types of bows. So there are some bows that are, that have a different projectile range, and they will be in a separate competition from those that have a shorter range or longer range. And the backstop between the target and where the clearance area is, is expanded for those that have a higher velocity. Best on my recollection on that.
Sounds good to me.
I was not at all aware of all these rules of archery that deep before this application. So I know a little bit more now, but only little.
It's picky. Thank you, ma'am.
So you know more about chickens and bows than you ever wanted to know.
It's a known fact that a bow is as dangerous a weapon as a rifle. I've got a 12-year-old friend of mine who killed his first deer with a bow this week. There are three types of bows, and of course, the, as you said, the competition is based on the strength of the bow itself. You know, the curve is not like a recurve. A recurve is not like a compound. So all of them are dangerous. They have to be controlled. They have to be used in the right environment. If not, somebody's hurt. So we want to make sure that that environment is a safe environment before we say, hey, yeah.
That's why we-
We need this because it's teaching our kids and our teenagers or whatever. It is teaching them, and it's giving them more things to do. And we need, we need to go in another direction.
Put your mic down, please.
Well, they hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, but we want the record to hear you, too. That was Ms. Henson speaking. She fails to ask. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Ms. Harden, who, so when someone wants to create an indoor/outdoor archery range, so they'll sub, just walk us high level through-
Walk you through it?
Yeah, just like-
Sure.
Through the process to the inspection point. And just like, who's responsible, not any more detail than that for me, please?
Sure. So for an indoor archery range, it would be allowed in either the RUB, the GB, the RB, the LI, the HI, or the INS. At that point, the design would need to be provided to us before the permit for any retrofitting indoors. And we would either look at the design and compare it to the Boy Scout design, or we would seek out the approval of the USA Archery staff that says this fits this. Either USA Archery would certify it for us, or we would look to our staff that's certified as USA Archery instructors to verify that it meets their criteria. That way, we, as code enforcement officials, don't also have to become experts in bow length and things like that. With the outdoor range, we would do the same, except with the outdoor range, we are requiring a site plan that shows that. Because with an indoor range, the indoor building is obviously the barrier, but there are still issues with the backstop and the areas behind the targets that need to be ensured that those are met. Both of them, I believe it says that we have a supervision on those as well. It's similar to the way we would do a firing range for the NRA, for gun training, for instance. We don't go through and say, this is, you know, this is how far you go. We turn to the NRA's guidance and said, you know, for this type of gun, because they've got different standards for different types of guns as well. This type of gun, you're going to have this much distance, this much buffer, this much security around it, et cetera. And we would issue a permit. Now, if it's indoor, what happens to trigger that is a change of use that goes through our zoning department. If it's outdoor and it's being constructed, that would come to us as well.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter, and no one is signed to speak to this, so we will be considering ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you text amendment 2024-2122, archery shooting range. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Cavalier, to approve. Second from Ms. Henson, and a discussion. Hearing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Jason Cavalier?
Four.
Shelley Richards?
Four.
Sheila Henson?
R.
Alan Patterson?
Four.
Chairman D?
Four.
Motion passes by a photo of five to zero. This will go to county council for further consideration.
Yes, sir.
Next item, item B, is Kershaw annexations, of which there are 10. Applications of Town of Kershaw to remediate annexation procedure for two private properties. The property text amendment, excuse me, tax map 0156-00024.01 Melissa Kirk and tax map number 0156-HOL-022.00 William Falkenberry, and eight properties owned by the Town of Kershaw in conformity with UDO and intergovernmental agreements.
Yes, sir. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So as you said, there are 10 annexations. I believe there are people in the public that would like to speak. So instead of speeding through like last time when there was no one here to speak, I'll stop with each one and see if there is any comment from the public, if that's all right with you.
We do have one signed to speak in public hearing.
So just as an overview, this is an administrative action that is required. It's required to have a public hearing before annexation. The county has an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Kershaw and both Heasprings as well to act as its planning department and planning commission. The annexation hearing, once you hold it here, whatever recommendation you make will go to the Town of Kershaw, and they will have to finalize it by acting on ordinance in two readings. So the first one, as you stated, the private property 404 Kershaw Country Club Road. Owner is Melissa Kirk. The property intended to annex into the Town of Kershaw. The current zoning is Lancaster County Rural Residential. The proposed zoning is Town of Kershaw R15. And absent any other issues unknown at this time, staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, you have before you 404 Kershaw Country Club Road. I have it right here. It does not have any particular one. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm assuming this is the right one. Yeah, I know it is. Pardon me? That's what I had planned. But something got kind of out of my hand. Yes. At this time, I would like to call this meeting into public hearing. I have one person who is signed to speak to these 10 annexations, so.
So I spoke with the citizen here in the audience. The one that she is concerned about is the last one on the list. It is, we're having a discussion with her to see if the, if there is a misunderstanding because the one that we have on Hudal Road is listed as being owned by Town of Kershaw. And she is interested in whether that affects her ability to do her timbering on her property. I don't believe it does, but we're, our planning director is clarifying with her first. If you would like to open the public hearing and close it for this one, I believe that unless there's anyone else in the public, are you here for 404? Okay. So when we get to the reservoir one, if you'd like to come up and ask questions? Yep, yep. So when we get to the reservoir application, this gentleman has property adjacent to it.
Which one is the reservoir application? It does not tell me that.
It is the one that's number five.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Right. We are in public hearing at this time, and no one is signed or asked to speak to this item. So we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. And I also have a motion to approve and a second. So let's do a hand call. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to number two.
Yes, the next item is? 124 East.
Oh, that's the road name. My apologies. Thank you. We'll get to this soon.
Let's-
All right, so the item number two, annexation number two, is at 124 East First Street. The applicant is William Falkenberry, and the interest is to annex again into the Town of Kershaw. Lancaster County Rural Residential converting to Town of Kershaw R15. Staff recommends approval.
At this time, we'll consider ourselves in public here on this matter, and no one is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you annexation request for 124 East First Street, Kershaw. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mr. Patterson, second from Ms. Henson. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. The third one is on East Second Street, identified as property number 0156B-0C-001.01. This is the first of the eight that are owned by the Town of Kershaw. The intent is to annex the property that the town owns into its own jurisdiction. Lancaster County RR is the current zoning, Rural Residential converting to the Town of Kershaw R15. Staff recommends approval.
And I think my papers have gotten tangled. Which one did you say?
This is East Second Street. It's annexation number three. Okay.
Okay. Mine didn't say that.
If it helps, the exhibit will look like the one on the screen.
What's your tax map number, please?
I think so.
If it's missing, my apologies. You find it?
Yeah, but the picture matches the one she's got up there.
56.
Okay. I got you. I apologize. But we'll go by the tax map number rather than the address, since that's correct. Do you happen to know what page it's on? Pardon? 180. Page 180.
All right. I say he's first. I say East First.
I misspoke. I put the wrong address up there.
All right.
East First. It's the, we're going to go by the tax map number because that's a more clear and resolute definition. So zero one five six B dash zero C dash zero zero one point oh one.
That's East First Street. That's the one we just done.
My typo, my problem, my apologies.
All right, where are we at?
My perfect veneer is cracked. We're on page one eighty and I have told you that the property is owned by Kershaw and is currently zoned RR and the town is proposed to move it to R fifteen and that staff recommends approval. So we are at the point where you could call for a public hearing.
So Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir.
Annexation number two, SR two, it was one twenty-four east First Street. And then number three, which is tax map zero one five six B dash zero C dash zero zero one dot oh one is also one twenty-four east First Street.
We have a typographical error.
Where? Well, I mean, just for the record.
Because I'm even not sure whether it's this East Second Street, which is on the exhibit up there or the one that's here, I would like for you to annex by the tax map number, which is an absolute identifier, if that's all right. And we will get clarification on that.
Okay.
This will not be the first one.
Five six B zero. Read that tax map number now.
Yes, sir. Zero one five six B as in Boy, dash zero C as in Charlie, dash zero zero one point zero one.
That was the first tax map under text. All right, commissioners, you have before you tax map zero one five six B dash zero C dash zero zero one dot zero one. Application by town of Kershaw to annex this property. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, Ms. Henson. A second from Ms. Richards. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you for helping us clarify. Number four, Three C's Road, does not have a number. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I thought you were missing the tax map number.
No, sir. Doesn't have an address number. Does have a tax map number zero one six zero dash zero zero dash zero three nine point zero one. Owner is town of Kershaw, annexing the property into the town of Kershaw. This one is zoned in the county agricultural residential or AR. Also proposed to go to town of Kershaw R fifteen. Staff recommends approval.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Patterson. Second from Sheila.
Well, it doesn't matter.
Ms. Richards. Somebody. I heard them.
Don't matter.
May, could you open the public hearing for this, please?
I will before we vote. Meeting is now opening a public hearing on the matter of the road and the property in question, Three C Road adjacent to the Kershaw Country Club property. No one has signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. I have now a motion to approve with a second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We will try to do better in the future.
We only get better every time.
All right.
So annexation number five is the reservoir, Hanging Creek, Hanging Rock Creek Reservoir. Go ahead, come up here. It's tax map zero one six zero dash zero zero dash zero two nine dash zero zero. Owner is town of Kershaw and they want to annex it. It is currently zoned Lancaster County Agricultural Residential and the town of Kershaw wants to like it to go to R fifteen. There is no proposed change in the reservoir use and the staff recommends approval. You do have someone here wishing to speak.
Any questions for staff? All right, sir, you may have time. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Gregory. I live in Rock Hill, twenty-nine forty-eight Harlinsdale Drive, Rock Hill, two nine seven three two. I am the owner of thirty-eight acres just south of the lake. And I'm, I don't have any objections. I just wanted to clarify because I'm not quite sure. One of the first questions I have, the one we just approved, the ending in oh thirty-nine point oh one, that's now the golf course, is it not? The port is back nine of the. Right. And with it being now, if I'm reading this correctly, it's being set up for single-family dwellings and related, I guess recreational religious. But is there any plan to change that golf course as a result of this hearing?
None there, no.
Okay, good. And on the, my other question is on the the lake property, which ends in zero twenty-nine point zero zero. If I understand it, the town of Kershaw now owns the property and they're going to change it to R fifteen, which would be used for single-family dwellings and recreational and everything. All of that, if I'm reading it right, all of that's underwater. We're approving it to build houses on. Is the town going to be changing anything or leave it like it is or what?
I don't know.
I can help with that.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to stand side by side and I'm going to talk into the microphones so the record reflects it. That's all right with you? All right, so the property zoning, R fifteen. R fifteen is the entry level zone for property coming into annexation. When you're annexing into a city, there is a most restrictive bottom level zone that is your default zone. It's typically always a single family with the most restrictions on it. Then from there, the community can decide whether they want to rezone it or not. You're absolutely right. The entirety of this parcel is underwater. It's absolutely not suited for single-family houses. But it just so happens the most restrictive zone is the one that has the availability for single-family houses on the larger lots and also has the availability in the zone for open space, which is what the lake is, and for utilities and the like. So as of right now, the town of Kershaw has no plans to do anything different with the property. They're just trying to do a administrative change so that they can patrol it, they can you know, have it in their city limits and it's under their jurisdiction fully. Not just under ownership.
R fifteen is kind of a catch-all.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
If you put in residences on it, it would need to be single-family.
If you put any residences on there, it'd probably be a bad idea in general. They'd have to be on stilts and you'd have to get there on boats. Yes, sir. We, I'm sure FEMA would have something to say about that.
Well, I really just wanted to clarify. I have no question whatsoever.
No, thank you for your questions.
Curious because I was wondering if you're going to change the golf course or the lake.
No, this is just a thing where there have been pieces of property that the town owns but didn't have jurisdiction over and they'd like to have, you know, control over their own destiny, which we support.
Just one more, just quick information question. I don't know where the town members of Kershaw are. Is that online?
Yes, sir.
Put those map online?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask one of the ladies at the table to walk you out when you go to give you a website where you can look that up. All right.
Thank you so much.
That's all the public input.
Is that, is that all you got?
Yes, that's all I got.
We will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Hearing none, we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you. Let me get it back in my hand. Tax map zero one six zero dash zero zero dash zero two nine dot zero zero. Reservoir on Hanging Creek, Hanging Rock Creek. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
A motion to approve from Ms. Richards. Second from Mr. Cavalier.
Sir.
Any comments, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passed by five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annexation number six, this is the dump site behind the cemetery off East Richland Street. Tax map zero one five six dash zero zero dash zero two three point zero zero. Again, the owner is town of Kershaw. The proposal is to annex it as county AR, Agricultural Residential. The zoning would go to the R fifteen and staff has no concerns and recommends approval.
Any questions for staff?
Did you say you had some concerns?
Oh, I said no concerns.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, I'd start listing them if I had them, I promise.
Okay, good.
Did we not rezone the property to the right of that on the other side of the road?
Yes, sir.
For development back a year or two ago?
It's been a while.
Just my information. Right, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Patterson. Second from Ms. Henson.
Could we go into public?
Any discussion? Pardon me?
Could we go into public hearing before you vote?
I think I did.
Okay.
A motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Motion passes by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. This one is number seven, The Water Tower at two four eight Kirkland Avenue. Tax map zero one five six G dash zero B as in Boy, dash zero zero eight point zero zero. This is also owned by Kershaw for annexation. It is currently zoned Lancaster County PB, which is professional business and it would be going to town of Kershaw R fifteen. Staff has no concerns.
Any questions for staff? We will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. And no one has signed to speak to this, but we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Patterson. Second from Ms. Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes by a vote of five to zero. We are moving right along. Ms. Harden.
The next one is number eight. This is located between East First Street and East Second Street without a numbered address. This is tax map zero one five six H, it's in Harold, zero E as in Edward, dash zero zero one point zero zero. Again, owned by Kershaw, again to annex, currently zoned Lancaster RR and proposed to go to R fifteen. Staff has no objection.
Any questions for Ms. Harden? We will consider ourselves in public hearing on this matter. No one has signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to.
Motion.
A motion from Ms. Richards.
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Cavalier, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion is approved by a vote of five to zero. Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir, this is number nine, the next to last one. This is behind one thirty-four Blackman Circle. It's a large tract of property that does not have direct access, but has access through easements. It's property number zero one five five dash zero zero dash zero two four point oh one. It is currently unzoned. There's been a discussion in the map between whether it's already in the city or not in the city, so we're going to fix that and bring it into the city as R fifteen and staff has no concerns.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, do I, we will consider ourselves in public here. And no one has signed to speak to this, so we will, this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Patterson. Second from Ms. Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Next item.
This last one is the northeast corner of Horton Hollands Road and West Richland Street. Is that not the one? The questions are, does the annexations impact the neighboring properties? And the answer is no, except that it makes them more available to annex in if they would like. It doesn't change the uses of the properties adjacent to it and any water rights that are currently existing are not impacted by this either. This is administrative, so it'll, it'll change. The jurisdiction of the city will come closer to you, but you won't annex unless you want to. That is a great conversation to have with us after the meeting, what would change if you did annex in. We can help you with that. Thank you. This is number ten. This is Horton Road and Horton Hollands Road and West Richland Street. Parcel zero one five six I as in Ichabod, zero M as in Mary, dash zero one six point zero zero. Kershaw's last property on this agenda, currently zoned RR, annexing it at R fifteen. Staff has no concerns.
Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Chair, what water rights are you worried about?
To fish? We need.
Is the fishing good?
The answer is always no. No, you don't give up your fishing holes.
They are just absolutely avoiding the record and I do not like it. Please, let's get it on the record.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions for Ms. Harden? I think I did. Hearing none, we will consider ourselves in public hearing. And Ms. Laura Hilton, you're up. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have up to three minutes to make your comments to the planning commission.
My name is Laura Hilton. I currently reside at eighteen fifty Kershaw Country Club Road. That is not the property that is in concern. The property that I'm concerned about is Hudal Road and the tax map number is zero one six zero dash zero zero dash zero two six point zero zero. It's nine point two acres. It currently has timber gurling on it and I just wanted to make sure that it could still be deemed. I didn't know if it was going to be included in the annexation or just surrounding it, whether I could continue to grow timber on it and harvest whenever necessary, whether the tax would change on from agricultural to regular property tax. And I, like I said, there once upon a time was water rights to build a fish. I didn't know if that was still a thing or my husband insisted whenever he acquired it to make sure that he held on to those water rights because that's where he went fishing when he was a kid, so. to make sure that he held on to those water rights because that's where he went fishing when he was a kid, so. I just wanted to know if any of those things would be changed by what his...
To the best of my knowledge, there would be no change in your property. The water rights are concerning. There should be in the deed when the property was purchased, if there is guaranteed water rights. If it's not in the deed and in the restrictions, it wouldn't be.
I know that it was when my husband's father owned it. And I know that it passed to my husband whenever he acquired it. When his father passed and it passed to his mother, she sold it to him. I asked for it to be done and left. I know that the attorney, because he knows us, laughed about it. And he said, I don't know if we can still do that or not. So I don't know if that transferred or not.
There again, we're not sure either, so. But that would be, in my opinion, one of the controlling factors on the water rights themselves. But other than that, there shouldn't be any changes as far as your property is concerned with this annexation, except for the fact that it does join the town after this annexation is complete. So at some point, they may decide they won't annex it. I don't know that.
Well, what would happen if it were annexed? Could I still keep it agricultural? Because with that R fifteen, that sounds like...
That would be entirely up to the town of Kershaw, not to this planning commission. Okay.
At this point, that was my only concerns.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming. And that's all that is signed to speak to this, so we will consider ourselves out of public hearing. Commissioners, you have before you a rezoning request, I mean, excuse me, annexation request of town of Kershaw, tax map zero one five six I, zero M, zero one six dot zero zero. The northeast corner of Horton Hollins Road and West Richland Street. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Cavalier.
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Richards. Actually called the voice that time. I'm getting better. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? The motion is approved by a vote of five to zero. And this concludes that section of this meeting. We will move on from there. Item seven, new road name, twenty twenty-four nineteen fifty-eight Grammy's Way. Ms. Jennifer Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry it took so long to get to you.
No, y'all moved along right smartly. Okay, so this application comes from a property owner. They own a large portion of land off Overbrook Road. They have recently created two smaller parcels. In order to obtain building permits for those parcels, the private driveway has to be named pursuant to UDO section six point eleven point four point G. And they have submitted an application with appropriate documentation. Sandra Burton has reviewed the requested names against county records and has noted the first choice Grammy's Way is sufficiently different from existing names to avoid confusion. Mailed notices were sent to adjacent properties to observe due diligence, although these were not required by statute. No calls or written comments have been received in opposition to the name. There's on the left, you see an overview of the aerial view of the large property. On the right, a picture of the driveway as it exists right now, going into the property with one of our lovely county vehicles. Wasn't much room to park. The application being sufficient and meeting all requirements, staff recommends approval. I'm here for questions.
Hearing none, thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, you have before you a road name change.
Or a new road name.
New road name, excuse me. Twenty twenty-four nineteen fifty-eight Grammy's Way. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Henson, second, Mr. Cavalier, any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please? Let's let Amy get in the business. She's lost it. We'll do it the easy way. All in favor? Motion is passed by a vote of five to zero. And this will stay with us and will not go to county council. Did you find it? Right. The next is a group of road name proposal. Ms. Brown?
This is NRN twenty twenty-four two one three eight. This is a group submittal received via, to Sandra Burton, via preliminary Platts and Civil Plans. All of these names attached are from the Exchange Development. Their plat, Senator has reviewed all of these and discussed with the applicant and come to, come to an agreement that these are all viable. So they are presenting these for approval, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Ms. Brown? Hearing none, commissioners, new road name twenty twenty-four twenty-one thirty-eight, October group submittal. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion from Mr. Patterson.
Second.
And a second from Ms. Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Jason Cavalier?
Or.
Shelley Richards?
Or.
Sheila Henson?
Or.
Alan Patterson?
Or.
Chairman Dees?
Or.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to zero. Get some of this stuff out of the way. Good job. We're moving right along. We are now at what we call other. The first item under item eight is continuing education. Robert's Rules of Order. And we will welcome our county attorney to the podium.
Don't get scared about all this I have. It's just visual aids that I have for you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I am Jenny Merk Dupont. I am the county attorney. I have been with Lancaster County since January of twenty twenty-three. This is not my first rodeo. I have been doing government law for twenty-plus years. So unfortunately or fortunately, I have a lot of experience with this stuff. And so they ask me to speak a whole lot. But sitting here and watching your meeting tonight, you all pretty much have it down pat. So I don't know that you really need a lot of my help. But what I thought I'd do this evening for you is, if we can get my PowerPoint up, I have a PowerPoint for you. I'm going to try to give you more of a thirty thousand foot view at this. And you're going to understand as I go through it why I say there's a thirty thousand foot view to this because my visual aids are going to help you with exactly why that is. And then, April, will you help me when I need you to pass that out? All right. All right, you ready? Here we go. If I can make this thing work. All right, I do little cute things in my videos, so if I can make this work. Rules are, there are no rules. So, but that's not exactly how this works. You all are the Lancaster County Planning Commission, as you know, and you're governed by a number of applicable rules and procedures. The first thing that you're governed by is this, the Comprehensive Planning Act. So that's the first thing we look at whenever you all take your seats and you start doing your work. That's the first thing we have to look at. And it requires you to adopt rules of organizational procedure. And I know that you all are working on some rules of procedure currently. You also have some things in your UDO right now. You're also governed by the things in your UDO, which this, of course, is chapter nine, which is the administrative part. And that is the one that talks a lot about your rules of procedure. So you see, there's a lot of different things here that apply to y'all. It's not just a couple of pages of rules here. And where the planning commission's own rules and the UDO do not apply, then county council's rules of procedure apply to you. That's found in the Lancaster County Code of Ordinances. And this is my copy. As you can see, I've got a few things marked because there's a few things that county council does all the time that I want to be able to flip right to that page. And I'm going to stop right here and tell you for a moment that I don't want to hit too much on county council's rules because this right here is a redraft. See that red? We're getting ready to redraft those rules of procedure. And the reason we are doing that is because we have a new council that's getting ready to be seated here at the beginning of the year. And also because county council's current rules are a lot. There's a lot of verbiage in them, there's a lot of confusion with them, and we just need to get them cleaned up and have them be a little more streamlined and a little more to go with what all our boards and commissions do, as well as what county council does. Now, where the council rules of procedure don't address something, this addresses it. This is the model rules of parliamentary procedure. As you can see, this is a voluminous document as well. So that steps in in the current county council rules that were adopted back in twenty twenty. They were adopted mainly because of COVID at that time. Included a lot of things regarding electronic meetings and things that we've moved into here as we've moved forward from COVID, but also COVID brought pretty quickly to the forefront. And then behind that is Robert's Rules, which is this large book with lots of little print inside of it. And you can get things that are reduced. You can also get a book called Robert's Rules for Dummies, which is one of my favorite things in the world. And of course, this is the Code of Ordinances that has anything else that applies to you or that county council passes. So that's a lot of things that you have to look through and understand exactly how to run meetings. And it's not just you, it's all boards and commissions as well as county council. So just as an overview, visual aids right there for you. You also have a number of applicable provisions which essentially address the structure and organization of the planning commission. Again, I'm not going to show them to you again. State code is first, tells you how you're set up. Then you have the UDO that tells you different structure and organizational procedures. And then where those things are silent, then you have things in the Code of Ordinances. County council just recently passed some general provisions regarding all boards and commissions in the county. Of course, if there is something that you all have specifically or by state law that you have to have that is in contradiction to what they passed, that would supersede what they passed. So lots of different things that govern you as well as all boards and commissions. Now, as I was saying, the state code, you know these things. It requires what the number of members are, speaks to the ability to dual office hold, which you cannot, how vacancies are filled in the same manner as the original appointment, the ability for members to be removed for cause, the requirement that representation on the commission be a broad cross-section of the county or interests and concerns of the county, the organization of the commission to elect your chairperson, vice chairperson, secretary, appoint employees that can serve as the secretary, says that you can meet at the call of the chair whenever he asks for that, requires you to adopt rules of procedure, talks about record keeping and use of appropriated funds, if any. That's what the state code tells you you have to do. The Lancaster County Unified Development Ordinance provides for your actual number of members, which is seven. It also talks about what constitutes a quorum, which is good for you all. You all have a special rule that says, no matter how many people you have, if you lose two people, then you're five, you have to have three. Other boards and commissions don't have that, so that's a good thing. And that's because you all meet so frequently and have such important work to do that they've made those rules like that. We have members withdrawing from a meeting without excuse by the majority vote of the members that are there, that are present. You are counted present even though you're not there to do the work. Your members represent each county council district. You have four-year terms. There's staggered membership. Chairperson is elected in accordance with any adopted rules of procedure. You preside for one year at a time with the eligibility for reelection. You all have equal rights and privileges and duties. So those are the things, state law first, then your UDO starts talking about some different things. And then, as I mentioned previously, county council has adopted some other general provisions which fill in gaps, and those are generally general powers, duties, residency requirements, length of terms, attendance, conduct, your service and removal, training requirements, filings with the clerk of council, and disestablishment. And again, any of those that are addressed by your specific UDO or state law, those don't apply. But those were just passed by council. We haven't even done staff liaison training on those yet. So your clerk, your staff, haven't even really been through that yet. So I'm not going to go into a bunch of detail about that because that's not really what you wanted me here for this evening, anyway. So let's talk about your rules of procedure. Again, as I mentioned, the South Carolina Comprehensive Planning Act requires that you adopt rules of organizational procedure. The UDO provides some provisions, as we talked about, which are considered rules of procedure. It talks about meetings, minutes, conflicts of interest, your attendance and malfeasance, and then, of course, determination of officers. So there are some rules in the UDO currently. At present, because you do not have an adopted set of rules of procedure, as to the conduct of your meetings outside of those provisions, then the Lancaster County Code of Ordinances, Article Two, Division Two, Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, and that's section two forty-two, provides this. And that's, I'll just paraphrase the rule. These rules, which they are talking about, county council's rules of procedures, apply to all meetings of county council, including committee meetings, and to all boards and commissions for which the county council appoints a majority of the members. You are all appointed by county council, so their rules would apply to you where yours are silent or if you do not have them. And then, as I mentioned before, this is the second part of that, which talks about the model rules of parliamentary procedure, that very large book that's put out by the South Carolina Association of Counties. And basically, that whole statute or that whole ordinance right there says that anything that you need to understand in the rules that they adopted, there are comments and so forth in this, you go there to figure out exactly what the rule means. And then behind that, you'd go to Robert's Rules. So a lot of different places where we find our information to run these meetings. So county council's rules will, would be considered your rules until you adopt some. And I believe we're in the works on that currently. So there can be some things that model county council's rules, and of course, they can be your own. That's the beauty of the law. It allows you to do the rules that you want that work for your commission. So the following are county council rules of procedures, which are not currently addressed either in your administrative chapter, chapter nine of your UDO, or which are not somewhere else in the state code or in other provisions in the Lancaster County Code. And I highlighted the ones which truly go to the conduct of your business. So we have in county council's rules, alternative attendance by a member. That talks about a quorum must be physically present at the location where the meeting's being had, but someone may attend virtually electronically. Only requirement the county council has at this moment is that both sides must hear. So if you're on the phone, if you're on a Teams meeting, you've got to be able to hear what's going on in here. If you are out there on the Teams, if they are in here, they've got to hear you as well. So you've got to be able to participate and be able to hear. So that is one thing that would apply to you all that is not currently included in your rules. Electronic meetings and standards for electronic meetings. You may conduct an all-electronic meeting. Again, that came from COVID, but there are very specific nuances to that. So that would have to be something, if you needed an all-electronic meeting, that is a provision that is included in county council's rules that would apply to you as well. The agenda, you all have your normal manner of conducting business, which is very similar to county councils. But there's also state law in the Freedom of Information Act that has requirements that talk about posting and amending agendas. So those things require, so there again, state law is stepping in. County council does the same thing. They require them to be posted and be in accordance with the FOIA laws of the state of South Carolina. Citizen comments, you had those tonight. They have sign-up deadlines and time limits. And of course, any UDO requirements would also apply here, too. So those would trump. County council has thirty minutes time limit and makes everybody... County Council has 30 minutes time limit and makes everybody sign up. There's a sign-up sheet, much as you had this evening. And like I said, they have that time limit on how long citizen comments can go. They also have provisions included in there that say if they hit a 30-minute limit, and if they want to go longer, they can by vote, or they can delay citizens' comments and have them later, at a later time in the meeting, much like tabling some matter, but it allows you to do it without a motion. Voting, as we were doing this evening, as Chair Deese just did, you have show of hands is the preferred, but voice if requested by any member, or the chair may call for a voice, goodness, a voice vote at any time. And then also in there, we have a majority is a majority. You understand what that means. It means a majority of the membership. However, there are some nuances that talk about, does it mean it's a majority of the total membership, or is it a majority of the members that are present and voting? Council's rules are a majority of the members who are present and voting. There are some other ones that are very specific that say it is a total of the membership. And that gets tricky because if you don't have everybody here, then you have issues. So just wanted to put that up there for you as well. Debate managed by the chairperson in an impartial manner, which of course, y'all didn't really debate this evening, but debate is also called discussion. So, and Chairman Deese handled that in an impartial manner. Then we get to the highlighted parts, main motions. Those are the things that take official action on the matter, that is bringing a motion before the floor. For you all this evening, it was approve or deny. Those are mainly the motions that ever come before any board or commission. Procedural motions, those may occur during the course of debate. They are called privileged, subsidiary, incidental, and recall. Now, these are all listed out very, very, very detailed in County Council's current rules. My goal in the change to County Council's rules is to back those up a little bit and make them just fall to Robert's Rules. So I'll move to that in a moment, but just want to outline them for you. Privileged motions do not require seconds. You do not need a second to adjourn. You do not need a second to recede. You do not need a second to raise a question or a privilege to convene an executive session, although that kind of falls a little bit over into FOIA, and you really do want to have a second for those, or to follow the agenda. Those are privileged motions. So those are really just kind of moving matters along, not really adding substance to anything that you're doing. Subsidiary motions are the ones that are applied to your pending motions. Those are things like laying things on the table, calling for the question, limiting or extending your debate, postponing or postponing to a time certain, which is in Council's current rules, which is a little bit confusing. Commit to a committee or amend. Amendments are the big ones that happen a lot. If you ever watch a County Council meeting, I've been laughed at many times because we do amendments to amendments to amendments sometimes, and so it gets a little bit convoluted at times. You have incidental motions. Those are your points of order, appeals to the chair, suspension of the rules, dividing the rules, considering by sections or paragraph, and requests or inquiries. All these will make sense in a moment. I'm going to give you some handouts so you'll understand exactly. Sounds like a bunch of mumbo jumbo at the moment, but you'll understand when I give you that. Recall motions bring matters back. You can reconsider, or you can recall from the table or from a committee. Now, those are the things that deal with the main crux of conducting business, of how you get matters passed through the commission. And again, don't fret. I've got handouts for you that are going to make it a lot easier because this is so detailed, as I've showed you. So many people have created cheat sheets for this because even us sitting there, there's no way I can plow through all those documentation while I'm sitting up at the dais trying to help out a board and commission or County Council at one time. The last things that County Council's rules have is discipline of individual members or a motion of discipline. That's a warning, and ultimately, removal from a meeting if you are being disruptive to a meeting and not allowing the meeting to continue. And that is for members of the commission, council, or any boards or committees. And then contempt. Contempt can be a citizen in the audience who's being disorderly conduct, or it can even be a council member or a board member if that's occurring as well. So those are Council's rules that you don't have anything that speaks to currently that would apply to the way you conduct your meetings. And you are using them because I watched them this evening. You are using them. Your chair is moving you through them appropriately. He's been doing this for a while. He knows what he's doing, and so he's very familiar with these rules. He comes to council meetings, so he sees what we do up there on a twice-monthly, at least, basis. Now, this next thing, and April, if you don't mind. I'm going to give you a handout that I've broken into two pages, so this is not going to be in order, but this is a handout that talks about Robert's Rules of Orders. It's a lot of different things in it, but if you'll flip when you get it to the back page of this stapled packet. And it starts talking about, in this, public comment. You'll see at the top of the page, it says Robert's Rules of Order, and then it talks about public comment. And you all have public comment, obviously, at your meetings, and I don't believe you didn't have any this evening. But just briefly, thought we'd just talk about that for a moment. You know, this is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the governing body about their views, but the meeting itself belongs to you as the governing body. So the public is allowed to provide input to the governing body, but again, this is still your meeting, so public comment is a time for them to express their views to you. Some good things to do, which I said for your rules coming up, as well as what County Council currently has, is to put some time considerations in there. Specific periods of time. They can talk for three minutes. I think you all have three minutes. 30-minute total time limit, those kind of things. As you're moving forward with doing your new rules of procedure, those are things you're going to want to have in there because if you leave it open, you could be here all night listening to people talk. And then, of course, if you shut them down, then you're going to have a public outcry for doing that. So that's something that's always a consideration. And again, have a time period when it would end, 30 minutes, time limit for each individual to speak. Written guidelines. I'm not sure I didn't get a chance to look at your sign-in sheets, but I know County Council, we have written guidelines that are on the sheets that tell you exactly how long the time limit is, tells you you need to sign up, tells what you are, you're going to talk about. And we also have, the chairperson reads a little script, I guess we call it, just to say, this is not a time for dialogue. This is a time for us to listen to what you have to say. We will not engage with you, et cetera. So those are just some different things that you consider as you move forward with your new, your new rules of procedure and guidelines. During the public comment, again, all comments should be addressed to the board, to the chair really is who they should be looking at when they're speaking. They need to adhere to time limits. The chair should thank each speaker on behalf of council because, or not council, but on behalf of the commission or the board because we don't want to engage with them during the public comment. Best not to respond at all, but however, sometimes it may be appropriate for the chairman to provide a little factual information if that's appropriate. No back-and-forth exchanges with the individuals. And then have staff, as you had this evening, ready to provide input, to talk to people, to take information so that it can be answered maybe in a different forum, in a different manner. And then, of course, behavioral expectations. There should be some modeling of courtesy. Public has the right to make critical and harsh remarks. That is their right, free speech, First Amendment. And of course, you can prohibit certain things, clapping, booing, hissing, things like that because that's disruptive to a meeting and not necessary. So you can do that. You can't prevent them from speaking and saying what they want, but you can prevent them from being disruptive. So just thought I would put that out there for you, just as some things to consider as you're moving forward, because obviously, public comment can get pretty heated sometimes. So you want to make sure that you can handle that. So again, that handout will help you as you move forward with your new rules of procedure, and we'll use it again in a moment. So if you'll just set that aside, I have another handout for you, as I promised. I saw your face, Commissioner Richards, as we were going through those motions, and it was like, what is she talking about? She's talking Greek. So April's going to hand out to you a Rules of Order motions chart. And when you get it, you will see it's got some highlights on it, and it's also got my writing on it. So what you can't see really well on the screen here is, as you can see, the way this is broken up is what I said first, main motions. Those are things that bring the business before the floor. You can see all the motions that are there. I highlighted for you some things that might be things that you address more on a regular basis in your meetings. You'll see the one, first one I highlighted says lay aside temporarily, and then it says how you do it. I moved to lay the question on the table. Now, let me back up for a moment and make sure we have an understanding here. A lot of people confuse tabling a matter with postponing a matter. If you table a matter, think about it as literally laying it on the table, and then at some later point, you want to pick it back up off the table and handle it. So if you have a matter that you're talking about and something else comes in that you need to address, someone could move to lay the matter on the table. You could move to a different item, deal with that item, then someone would need to recall it from the table. Postponing, which we'll talk about next, is the next one. Postponing is where you can push it off to a different time. County Council currently has, you push it off to a time. So they could say, for example, you all come up a lot. We'll have a matter that Director Harden will have up, and she will be talking about it, and County Council will want to postpone it until the Planning Commission has issued its determination. And so that is a time, requires a majority vote. Now, if they say a time or date certain, if they say we are going to do it at the November 12 council meeting, then it's a whole different thing because you are setting a very specific date to bring this matter back. That requires a two-thirds vote. So a postponement and a tabling are different. Postponing is pushing it out to a different time or date. Laying on the table is setting it aside for momentarily. Now, if you do not take it back off the table, it's dead. But if you lay it on the table, you can bring it back during that meeting. So just to make that clear. Now, the next thing I highlighted was modifying wording of a motion. That's amendments. And I'm going to get to that in a minute because, again, that's one of our favorite things to do at County Council, and it does get a little convoluted, so we'll kind of go through a flow chart on that. The next part, Part 2, is incidental motions. The only thing I really saw on there that you all may at some point want to do would be to divide a question, and that would be where you have multiple parts to something you're considering. Somebody may want to move to divide that, handle part of it first, and then handle another part at another time or separately from that. We've had that at County Council on consent agenda items. They have a consent agenda, has several items on it. The reason for that is to just adopt it all or move forward with it all in bulk. Sometimes we've had to divide the question and pull things out. So that's not a great example for you all of what we do, but it could perhaps be something that you all may want to do if you have a compound question or a compound matter in front of you. And then the last part is motions that bring a question again before an assembly. So the two things that happen there are you can rescind a vote, which of course, that's hard to do because with you all, you pretty much do it, and it moves on to council at that point. So rescinding a vote is pretty much overturning the vote. Reconsider is you can pull it back and reconsider what you did. But again, you cannot reconsider or rescind something if it's already done and gone. So you all have the, I guess, the opportunity to perhaps do that at some point if it hasn't gotten to council yet. Because once it leaves you and goes to council, you really don't have the opportunity to reconsider it. But if you have a meeting in between the time council may get it, you could potentially reconsider. And there, reconsidering is only on the prevailing side. So if the prevailing side was you moved to approve, only someone on that side can move to reconsider. Someone who lost cannot move to reconsider because that defeats the democratic process. That's why that is done that way. And so there again, it's prevailing side only, and I wrote a note down there that the original matter must be debatable in order for you to debate a motion to reconsider. So that's a quick and dirty little cheat sheet on some of the main rules that you all probably would see before you when you are doing your work as the Planning Commission. The next thing is, April, if you'll help me with that, another even more simplified chart of these rules. And again, I'm not going to go through it. I've highlighted again the ones, but this one just lays out, and you can see, so if you lay that in front of you when you are at the dais and you're doing your work, you can see exactly, can we debate this? Can I amend it? And what kind of vote does it require? So again, we've got those same ones, lay on the table, postpone definitely, and again, I wrote out to the side, there's time is postponing definitely, and then time and date, and that is the difference in the type of vote that's required. Amend amendments, amend main motions, main motions, and then down, not that you'd ever want to do it, but appeal your decision of your chair, divide the question, and then some of these other ones are the more frequently used under Robert's Rules, as well as what we use in County Council, rules that are out there. And so this is an even more simplified chart of all these different rules. It just exactly tells you, it doesn't tell you what it does as the first chart did. It does tell you exactly how to handle it and what you need in order for it to pass. All right, so am I confusing everybody so far? Or are we all like, is this worthwhile so far around going with it? Okay. All right, good. All right, so this is something that, again, I keep referring to County Council because that's where I am the most and working the most. This is something that gets very convoluted, is amending motions. And so what you see on the screen and what you're going to see on this handout is an illustration of an amendment. And I'm going to walk through it with you as best I can without confusing you. Okay, so let's start at the very beginning. You'll see the first highlight up there. So let's say someone moves to approve a rezoning. I'm just going to throw that out there. Move to approve. That's the main motion that's now on the table. Someone needs to second that, as you know. Then there's discussion at that point. Someone may decide they want to amend that motion to rezone that property in whatever way. So it is during discussion that an amendment is made. That amendment has to have a second. Then you have discussion. Now, in a very convoluted world, you can amend the amendment at that point. You can amend an amendment one time. So think of it as a main motion, and you could potentially have, as this chart shows, two amendments. And we have had those with County Council. We have had just straight-up amendments. I think Chair Harper has gotten to the point that he just likes to have one amendment, and we just go back to the main motion, and there are just as many amendments as we need because one time at a budget, we had amending amendments, and it gets utterly confusing. So again, if you look at the flow chart, you've got the main motion. You can then have an amendment during discussion. That needs a second. And then at that point, you have discussion. If someone wants to amend it again, they can do that. Would need a second, discussion. So the same pattern you would go through on a regular motion. But at that point, you have to stop. There can be no more amending at that point. You will have to take, go ahead.
So it doesn't have to be, the amendment can be amended by someone other than the person who amended it initially?
Yes, anyone can amend it. Yes, yes, yes. So when you get to that, though, second amendment, or I'll call it the secondary amendment as it says on this sheet, that is the point where a vote has to be taken. Can't move further down the chain because heaven knows you could have 600 amendments at the end of the night. So that is when a vote has to be taken. Then it has to start going back up the chain at that point. So if that amendment fails, then you're back up to the amendment prior to that, and we take a vote there. Fails or passes, whatever happens, you're going all the way back up to the main motion. It may be all the amendments die down here, and you're back to exactly what you started with, or it could be amendments have passed on the ladder back up, and the main motion is now however it was amended. So if you think of that flow chart there, you're going down, and then you're coming back up. And if you need more amendments, you start the process over because you come all the way back up to the main motion, and it's, we're now ready to vote on the motion as amended. And then someone can make another amendment, and you can start the process over.
So you could start amending that main motion again?
The amended main motion.
The amended main motion?
Yes, yes. You can only knock down the chain. It can only be twice. But if you get back up to the main motion?
You can amend that?
You could start, yes, you could amend.
Before you vote on the main motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. If you kill these down here, if you kill these down here?
Yep.
You could be back at your original main motion?
Yep.
And you could start a whole other amendment process? Or you could come back up here, and it's amended. and it's amended, and then you're starting a new amendment process to the amended main motion.
We'll have to try that next month.
Oh, my gosh.
Hot dog. Yeah.
Good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Good luck. Yes, I can tell you our.
It is still illegal to come in with a weapon, isn't it?
Uh, yes. I would say, let's not, let's not do that. Yes, yes. I can tell you that my first budget here in 2023, well, it was the 2024 budget, but in 2023, we did this process more than one time, and the next day, I can't tell you how many people stopped by my office, and the funny thing was to say, "Jeannie, I'd like to amend the amendment to the amendment to the amendment." That was the running joke that was going on for a long time. So our fleet manager, to this day, likes to do that to me. So anyway, but that is probably the most convoluted thing that you all can get to, and hopefully, you don't have that happen. But if you do, you have a flow chart now that shows you, and it even gives you a little script on how to do it. So hopefully, that'll be some help to you if you ever get to that. But I hope you don't, because that is not a fun process at all. But sometimes it is necessary, especially if you have some very complex matters. It may be that the motion that's before you needs to have different things, as you have, conditions and so forth, that as you start it, and then wait, we need to amend that, we need to add some conditions, you know, you started out with a motion this evening, and you put some conditions on it, Commissioner Patterson, you put a condition on it. But let's say that wasn't there initially, and you're already there, so you can start using this process to do those kind of things. For you all, that is very helpful, because you do have different conditions you're adding to things that you are thinking of, that staff recommends, may not be exactly what's in front of you, the applicant may want one thing, you may think other things need to go. So this amendment process is probably something that would be very beneficial for you all. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So like, for the, because, I mean, sometimes we'll have, we'll make a motion and forget to put, to add the conditions. So instead of withdrawing that motion, we can amend that motion with the conditions.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, in the past, we've like withdrawn a motion.
Absolutely.
And then restated condition, but.
And you can withdraw the motion as well. That's perfectly allowable as well. But yes, you could amend it. I mean, if you've already got that motion out there, as long as you're still in discussion.
Right.
You can do that amendment. But just remember, if you think of one, and then, oh, wait a minute, now I need another one, you know, so.
Right.
You can only do it twice, or you're going to continue to have this loop going on for forever. Or withdraw the whole thing, and then just throw one motion out there with everything that you've got in it. Yes, sir.
I could get corrected, but in the past, I, believe me, I've had amendments that were half-page long, you know? My problem was getting them right, you know? So my request to all the commissioners, and I continue to request it, if you have more than a simple amendment, and it's going to be a long, drawn-out amendment, put it in writing before you get here. Give me a copy, and have my copy will be ready to go to the clerk for the record.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can tell you that there's no problem with that. You're absolutely right, that is, that can be done. I do that for Chairman Harper with County Council for our executive sessions, because for executive session, by law, we have to read out exactly what the matter, the nature of the executive session is for, so he must read what the matters are that they will be considering. And of course, if you look at an agenda, we don't say we're inviting certain people in, but we may need certain people to be back there to discuss. And of course, executive session is closed to anyone outside of whatever the governing body is that goes into the executive session. If you bring people in inappropriately, you've opened it up and made it no longer an executive session. So I will write him a motion, or write his script for him that says, "this is what I need, I need a motion to that effect." And then someone will say, "so moved." And so Sherri Simpson, our clerk, will have a copy of that, I have a copy of it, the chairman has a copy of it. So yes, and I've done that in a prior jurisdiction. If we knew something was going to be a motion that needed to be made, and it was going to be half-page long, long, something that was very convoluted, it would be written for them in advance, so that, but now, some things happen on the fly, obviously, that you have to deal with, and we can work through that, too. Even if you, if we get the gist of it, the clerk can restate it, sometimes the attorney can restate it, the administrator can restate it, we can restate it to make sure we get it into a posture, and make sure the commissioners, county council members, board members, all understand, is this, was this what you meant by the amendment? So you don't have to be a wordsmith to make sure you get it completely, as long as we understand the gist of it, we can get it and help you with it. Even if it's not written out in advance, we can do it up there to make the record clean, as I know you want, you want your record to be clean.
I try to state it back regardless.
Exactly.
Try to state it back and ask, and I think most of them know, I will ask them, "is this what you said?"
Exactly, exactly.
And I make that statement on record.
And that is, and that's the best way to handle it, because obviously, you don't want an amendment, or you don't want something to go down that is not what you intended, and so that everyone understands what they're voting on as well. Because if you start voting on things, then later, then we have to fall to those things like reconsidering or rescinding whatever was done, because then you say, "wait a minute, I didn't mean that." Now we're going to have to go back, and then you have to reconsider, and no one likes to, we don't like reconsidering and things like that. We want to do things, move them on, and get them done. All right, so that's very convoluted. So back to you, that first sheet we handed out, as again, as I stated, the front of this, and what's up on the screen, really is just going through what we've been talking about, your types of motions. Every motion has six steps, as we've kind of been talking about probably at length right here. Different pointers on how to request points of information, order, personal privilege, inquire about things, and then there's a side over there about tips and reminders for chairpersons, but your chair has this under control, so that's not necessary. The rest of this packet goes through some more things, handling motions, what minutes include, how agendas are done. Another nice little chart that shows you these rules again, with all these breakdowns of debate, can it be amended? What kind of vote does it have? Can it interrupt a speaker? Does it need a second? And then that, then some other things about general principles, about the rules of order, how you amend things, how you can write things, much like the chairman was just talking about, and then that last page with the public comments. So hopefully, that's a handout that you can just kind of look through, and that can help you as well, because it's got pretty much everything you would need to run a meeting in that. The last page that I was going to give you also is a lot, again, more detail. It sounds like I'm a teacher giving you all a bunch of homework, but this will, if you just stick it in your notebooks or wherever you are, I promise you, this will help, because if you ever go to or watch a county council meeting, I come in with a notebook, and all of these documents are in mine, so that I can quickly flip through and find things. So this last thing that April's handing out for you goes into a lot more detail, again, on all these different kinds of motions. On the second page, you see I struck through postponing indefinitely. That's not something that is currently in council's rules, but again, it may show up at a later date. And when they rewrite their rules, if you all would like me to come back and go over new rules that they have, or to help you with any rules you all write, I'll be happy to do that. But this is a little even more in-depth, different kind of chart. If you don't like the chart that just has all of it laid out, this kind of goes through in an outline form of each one of those rules. And again, not that I expect, I don't know all of them backwards and forwards, I carry them with me all the time, they're in my notebook, they're with me at any board and commission that I go to, so that I have it readily available, and hopefully, it can be a resource for you as well, if you all do get into these situations, and you can quickly pull it out and look at the different things that are on there, and know exactly what you're intending to do, especially if you look at your agenda in advance, and you start researching your matters, you may start saying, "wait a minute, there's some things on here that some of these motions might apply to." And to the chairman's request, we can help you get motions done in advance, amendments that you might see coming, to the way you normally do business with your just approve or deny, or what have you, conditions, things like that. This will help you to be able to prepare those, and to know what you need, too, because we all know, we work the group, we make sure we know who's on our side. You know, if we want to do something special, we will make sure we have the votes, and we talk to each other in advance, so you know exactly what you need. Do you need a two-thirds, or do you need a majority? And then how many people are here? Is it the numbers present, et cetera? So this will help you with that, or that's my intention, I hope it will. And then I'm going to end you, I'm going to give you this as my ending to my little So that's all I have to say. Without rules, you have chaos up here, you don't want to have chaos, you all do not. I am utterly impressed with how well your meetings ran this evening, and hopefully, this old 30,000-foot view, as well as these documents, will help you. As the county attorney, I am here to help. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. I'll take questions right now if you have some. I'll be happy to come back and do some more training, like I said, help you all with your own rules of procedure, which I know you're working on, and then when County Council adopts new rules, I'll be happy to come back and talk to you about those, because they may be something you want to incorporate. And of course, like I said, if you adopt your own rules, those will be the backup to fill in any gaps, then we'll fall to Roberts' rules after this. But again, all this is Roberts' rules, but I promise you, what's in council's rules is this, the same thing. There were some minor tweaks, which I've noted by writing out to the side about like the postponements and things like that. So any questions?
It's more of a statement.
Sure.
There are a lot of things that you can do within the rules that can either speed up or slow down the course of a meeting.
Correct.
And I'm not like Mr. Patterson said, I don't have a nail in my ear. I did read Roberts' Rules of Order from cover to cover, which was ridiculous. I did pick up on a lot of items in there that concern this commission.
Correct.
And how we operate.
Correct.
And it's worth anybody's time, if they're willing, to sit down and read that book. And he says no right quick, but, you know, there are things in there that can speed up or slow down the meeting.
Absolutely.
Either faster or as quick or as slow and as tedious as you want.
Absolutely, just like we were just talking about, amending amendments and amendments and amendments, that can slow down a meeting, absolutely can slow down a meeting.
Plausible deniability.
There you go. Calling, there are things like calling the question, you know, if debate gets too long, somebody can move to call the question. So to your point, there are a lot of things, and they're on these, the ones that are used very frequently, they're on these, I just didn't hit on them here, but they're on there, the things that, to your point, if the meetings start moving along, if you're having discussion that seems to be moving too long, somebody can call the question. Now, whether that works or not is another story. But yeah, then there are points of privilege, if you don't have the information you need, point of, you know, inquiry, I need to know this. I mean, these are different things that are nuances, as the chairman is saying, that are in Roberts' rules, that these sheets, these cheat sheets, will help you with, to understand, and yes, you can, there are things, there are ways to be dilatory, and make a meeting run a lot longer than it needs to, and then there are ways, if you use these cheat sheets, you can move your meetings along a lot faster, because then you're understanding exactly what your motions are doing, and different things you can do. If you're not ready to vote on something, you could postpone, and you know, going into, you'll see county council will do that sometimes, sometimes on planning commission matters. They will, they're not quite ready yet, and so they will come straight out of the box and say, "I moved to postpone this until after the Planning Commission has had a chance, or until this date, after TRC does whatever." They'll set those kind of dates, but they know going into it, that's a motion they can make, and then we don't sit there and have a whole public hearing, or an entire presentation by staff, or citizens' comments, or anything on it, and it moves the meeting much faster, because they're able to do that.
And we have done that a number of times in the past, but any further questions for Ms.?
I'll say, I bought this that, if you want to look, have you seen this?
Yes, ma'am, I have one of those.
Is it decent?
I have one of those, too. That's perfect.
Okay.
That's absolutely perfect.
I bought a copy of Roberts' Rules, and I put it in the same category as Tolkien. I would rather drive spikes under my fingernails than, and I'm an engineer, I need, I read ASTM standards, and I was like, oh, my God, this is worse than that.
It is, it is very convoluted to start reading it, the way it's written. So I am very appreciative for all these.
Well, that's why, so that's why I got this, read this, then maybe go back and try to read the book.
And that was even a lot of verbiage on there, too, so hopefully, some of these little just graphs.
I was nervous, like, oh, that's going to.
Yeah, that is, yeah, because I have one of those as well, and I can't tell you, I don't know if I've ever really pulled it out. I have it, but I will flip to that sheet much faster than I will that thing. But that is a good, that is a good thing. There is also a book out there called Roberts' Rules for Dummies, and it is literally called that, and I do own it, and I just didn't bring it with me this evening, but it helps, too. It will tell you, for me, what it did a lot when I was learning this and first starting was, I would read there, and it would tell you where to go in here. And so I would then be able to go to that specific, and read the Greek that's in here, and then try to decipher it, and then I would go to this, to the in-brief, and try to make sure that I understood completely, because this is written very, very convoluted, even for a lawyer, it is written very convoluted. So there's all these other resources out there, they're there, those things, these sheets, the Roberts' Rules for Dummies, all of that is out there, so yeah, so that you don't read this, I can't believe you read this whole thing, because it's like over 1,000 pages.
That's the reason the new revision to that big document's only about this thick.
Yeah, because this is the 11th edition is the current, so this is the 11th edition of this that they've gone through, but, yeah, but this is, this is the current edition, but yeah, when they come out with a new one, you get the newly, the new rules, and what's out there, and how it changes, and luckily, we don't change ours here at the county too much to move with that, but we have to be aware of them, because if we don't address it, it fills in.
Amazingly, the stuff that was changed into issue 12 has nothing whatsoever to do with us, nothing.
No, sometimes they make those tweaks.
Where they even found the stuff at.
They make tweaks to things that have nothing to do, so that's why I keep the 11th edition, until I need to buy a new one, when it starts talking about something that's relevant to what we do, then I'll get the new edition.
Ms. Jeannie, we do appreciate you.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity, and again, hope this helps, and more than willing to help, you know, again, when we get new rules and so forth, and go over, and to go over your rules of procedure as well, because as you can see, they're very important. So if you have rules that address everything you need, then you don't have to worry about looking through all this mess to find it, especially this, or your laminated sheet. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, and thank you for the opportunity to be at your meeting this evening. Again, very impressed by how well your meetings run, staff, as well as the commission, very impressed. Wish all of, everybody ran like that, so thank you.
I'll see you again on the 28th, I guess.
Yes, you won't see me tomorrow. My son has a football game, so Commissioner Tinklinburg and my son are on the same football team. Yes, so you won't see me there tomorrow, but you'll see me on the 28th.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good time, be careful.
Thank you.
All right. One other item is next month's agenda. And we'll see where we go from there.
We have four items on the November agenda. We have one of the Edgewater preliminary Platts Eagles landing section is coming back. Well, I don't think it ever actually got to us, they withdrew it for a while. We've got a small rezoning, Mr. Thompson over by Beaufort Crossroads, that we did a rezoning for him, he wanted to build a mini storage, self-serve storage area, he needs a little more acreage, so he's got 2.6 additional acres that he wants to rezone for his project. We have a text amendment, a request from a developer who wants to increase the building